Good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, May twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five. This is meeting of the Gloucester School Committee. We are meeting at Gloucester High School Library.
Not yet.
The public is welcome to attend meetings in person or alternatively through the Zoom link provided on the agenda. A meeting notice will reflect if the meeting is via Zoom only. As the recent amendments to the open meeting law allow, the school committee may continue to hold. Please note, the in-person meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the remote content, uh, remote connection. I'll call this meeting to order and state that the mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful and engaged lifelong learners. I'd like us to introduce ourselves around the table. We can start with Stephanie.
Stephanie Delacy, we call her Cecilia.
Greg Berga, Mayor.
Phil Melvin, School Committee.
Kathy Clancy, School Committee.
Melissa Prince, School Committee.
Who are Lisa and School Committee?
Jeremy McKean, School Committee.
John, Director of Special Education.
Man Loa, Superintendent.
In the best way, Assistant Superintendent.
Gary Frisch, CFO.
Okay, and I ask that you join me. I just wanna take a second to acknowledge Jeff Porter and our thoughts being with him that was very difficult to have to say. Okay, uh, we are going into executive session to begin this meeting and we will come back out and resume our, the rest of our agenda immediately after that. So I move that we enter executive session pursuant to executive session purpose two of Mass General Law thirty A, section twenty one A to discuss strategy and, or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel and purpose three of Mass General Law thirty A, section twenty one to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Gloucester Acme Clerical Unit A. So move.
Second.
Hey, roll the bell, please, Stephanie.
Chip,erson, Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Ms. Lisa.
Yes.
Mr. McKee.
Yes.
Mr. Mania.
You'll be here later.
Yeah, Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Sorry. Ms. Prince.
Yes.
And May Roberta.
Yes.
So we want to be back to join.
It's okay, I just, I didn't notice it.
Talk about it. Yeah, we'll get it.
Okay, we'll go back to meeting. We can leave this. Simon, think that we're all on. Are you back on?
Is where I need them.
Okay, we're back on, so we should join.
You can open the. Oh, come on, door to them. Thank you for the means of. Are we using this for our displays?
Yes. But you have, you have them.
Yeah, I have everything. I don't think we are happy, yes. Okay, so we, this is continuing the meeting of the Gloucester School Committee. We just went out of executive session and my next item of business is oral communications. If anybody would like to speak to the school committee, now is your opportunity. Speak to us. We have, just for the record, no one in attendance physically here. We have a few people online. Okay, see none. We will move on to the recognition. It's a good time to do this.
Wanted to recognize the, and I'm sure it's in the superintendent's report, it's most of my things are, but the volleyball game at these events, put on by the students and the staff, outstanding. It was almost like a production, like an ESPN production where they, they had announcers, they had a crowd, they had, ushers to bring you to your seats, and it was really, really well done, so. A hats off to the students and the staff and some great volleyball as we, as we got to witness, so.
Okay, so Daniel also being the student. The Gloucester Education, the Gloucester Arts Festival, which was an extraordinary bit of organization and student activity and so many things, it's almost hard to say. But what a, what a job the G E F did and all the volunteers and all the students and all the staff and the music and plays and the art. It was really, it was just an extraordinary window into what's happening in Gloucester.
And second. And we have a tennis team going to.
Martha's Vineyard.
Moving on in the playoffs, Martha's Vineyard, which is exciting.
There's water to paint, right?
And of course, baseball, softball seem to be moving as well. I don't know if I'm forgetting anybody or missing anybody, but try to read paper.
Prom, and prom happened.
And prom happened.
On a rainy, green night.
But they're looking always at it here.
Oh, that's nice.
Supported by Officer Mike Scola and much, who else? Perhaps the VA, very nice. All good, and also a lot of senior events coming up too.
Next item of business, we have, we are on the hiatus on our Gloucester High School Student Advisory Council. They're having our new council later in August. So the next item is consent agenda. Does anybody have any items they would like to? I know the consent was presented, second. I'll favor say aye. Uh, next item of business is deliberation on education issues in the superintendent's.
Thank you, Spencey. So I will just give a quick presentation here. So, as we say, the Gloucester Public Schools everyday matters. Everybody belongs, and every student learns. So, uh, tonight, we'll do a few things. I'll give you an update from our other schools. And then a quick update on superintendent's evaluation. And then Chris Castle's here and Amy Pasquarello will give us update on English language learners and work around the district, uh, our schools, supporting our English language learners and their families. And then I will give a budget presentation for our twenty eight six budget. And then I can make something to consider that and vote upon it. So let me get going with a few things. So a lot of senior events right now. One of the best ones that started, I think, first at Beeman, I think, now has spread to all of them. We have a senior clap out, so the elementary students clap out the seniors who are graduates of those elementary schools. So the Beeman students who are the seniors return to Beeman, it's veteran students, it's Gloucester or veteran students. When those schools are now graduating senior return, these veterans, same West Parish, a pub coke, so that is just awesome, fun, for everyone.
Are some of the schools doing it on the sixth, if they have the points?
Most are doing it on the sixth. There's been a, there's discussions on the T O page about that.
What does have the twenty six, they cover their cap again, it's pretty awesome. That's up in schools to sort out. It's a great graphic there, that's awesome. Nice graphic. So that's the great, great, yeah, what's nice about it is like the elementary schools have stars in their eyes. They're just putting these kids, big kids, everything, and then also the seniors just, they can't believe it, you know, that they're, it really puts into perspective for them, I think, you know, wow, I've come from this far. I used to be that big, you know, it's big, it's pretty wonderful. So update from Beeman, Beeman, like the other elementary schools, has finished their MCAS testing. And they're currently finishing up their spring benchmark testing. We'll get, learn about some results on the spring benchmark testing and learning from all the elementary schools next school committee meetings. Teachers are also gathering data to work in class placement that's happening across all our schools. Beeman on June fifth, Beeman is having their demonstration night. So students and teachers are preparing for that, putting together work sample, samples and projects to share with their families. And then also, fifth graders spend two days with West Parish students, making new friends and challenging themselves at project adventure. And the fifth grade is also preparing for the visit to North Shore Children's Museum, so great stuff happening at Beeman. These veterans, here are some photos from the first annual fifth grade volleyball tournament. Mr. Melvin already gave a great explanation what happened. What we really, what I deeply appreciate of this is that it was a, a sort of, it was a group effort, all our special teachers, so, uh, music, art, P D, and it involved all of fifth graders in different roles. Okay, so if you didn't play volleyball, you could be a judge or scorekeeper or announcer. And everyone got to play a different role, really fun. Lots of smiles, lots of laughs. The unknown played the Gloucester Hawks. You see some of the names there. The winning team was the unknown, a very powerful team. Aiden Badmost, Gianna Carlson, Cameron Fernandez, Leila Hawal, Dante Lanchiani, and Yul Thompson. Were from the unknown. Gloucester Hawks sadly didn't quite make it. That was Daisy Sockley, Cockley, Daisy, Daisy Bakak. Gianna Connors, Mauricio Di Paula, Samara Goes, Rubiero, Lamir Thomas, Krista Velasquez, Rorans. So, and then you can see the M C, that anthem was performed on the keyboards and vocally. The play-by-play was done by Kiara and Aiden, with referee, DJ, scorekeepers, line judges, and then chitlins as well, so. Great, great, good, great event. Punko efforts.
We're now instructor and they open that. And then so it's into the team and health person for the students is integrated in health wellness. At the same time, we've been doing youth mental health first aid, so training our adults, supporting all high school students. Twenty percent of GHS high school staff have been trained. These staffers here are doing the trainings. And then the greater, the Gloucester Youth Leadership Council is now offering and the Regional Youth Development Network. Is now offering youth birthday to parents, families, family members, coaches, counselors, anybody who works in the area. Would be really helpful, I think, especially you, you took it?
I did the training.
It's online, right?
No, no, it's in person.
Oh, in person, okay, great, yeah.
So they've done it, I did it at Rockport Library, but they've done it in all these different, they went Gloucester, they did it in Danvers, they're doing it all over.
Right.
Weekends, they can do a one day training or a two day training. And I thought it was really, really valuable and can I ask a question about this?
Yeah.
So. The, the ages for youth mental health is for the, for the training that they're giving is not just high school age. So it's really almost like if we're looking at school ages, it's like fifth, sixth grade up at eighteen. So I'm just wondering, it says twenty percent of GHS staff have been trained, but. Of course, I mean, why, I, I, I'm wondering why more staff is not trained and it differently.
Yeah, so a couple of reasons, one, just getting going with really, but having got to middle school where we should, you know, and, and. You're right that youth mental health first aid, it says, you know, middle, middle and high school students, sounds like even younger perhaps. But certainly makes a lot of sense to, they continue to move on and support people in middle school. So we're in the, we're in the approaches and, and techniques, that sort of thing.
I mean, just to say, like, some of it is, I think, for people who work with youth, I think people are familiar with, but that you have to do both of them. You have to sort of see different scenes and if, you know, talking about, when we talk a lot about dysregulation and signs.
Yep.
I mean, that's what they're training you to sort of identify and then how to respond, given that you're not a counselor. Right? So it's like, no, you're the first aid. So I, I think, you know, for people who are not in the whole adjustment counselors or school psychologists, but who are present as students. There were some Rockport teachers who were at my training, the librarians, there were lots of, I mean, it was interesting who was, who was there.
And that's what we're also finding out, just sort of by word of mouth really, is that more of our staff have taken the public the offer well, so. But really hear you about also supporting our middle school staff to get this training. Because as you said, it's, it's very valuable, that sounds like a good, good job of teaching. That's really really helpful.
Yeah.
Great. Appreciate the environment help. Especially, Jesse will see Walsh, uh, really supporting us, so. So that's the work we're doing, our teachers are doing, our staff are doing. Another thing, want to talk about this?
This happened this afternoon, it started with a teacher, Emery Wenzel, requested to do a book study. With Katie Novak's new book of Elevating Educational Design with AI. We reached out and found out that she does, she would do a whole training for us, so we have thirty six educators today. We're online, we're taking Novak being trained. On educational design with, using AI and how all improve their instruction and planning and those kind of things. They all got a book, they take home, and then we'll continue it with Emery's. Book group over the summer, approximately fifteen teachers are signed up for that. It's really based on universal design for learning, Katie Novak is the guru on that and how to make learning accessible to all students. And this is how we use AI as a tool to help us do that.
Really nice because it's consistent with work we've been doing, our universal design for learning in our schools for a number of years, we've been building on that. And that's how many teachers really understand, like, as Amy just said, you know, like, cool, now available, and I can help them. Um, with the same principles, with the same principles. I was hoping to participate in the training, but I had to go have a meeting with the mayor, which is also fun, but. It's so fun tonight.
That's what you do.
Really appreciate that our educators, our staff are engaging this work, exploring it, learning about it, and then we'll support them. Another thing we've launched is.
I was just gonna ask, are we gonna have any type of mandatory professional development on this topic? I've been reading a lot of articles, how you can take AI and combine it with other apps that are out there and design lesson plans and things like that, and I know it's new.
Yes. So we'll, we'll have more and more professional development on this, Katie Novak coming back to our district on November fourth for the full day training. She might do some AI, but she'll do some UDL training as well. And we will do more conversations about, you know, how to use AI and when it's appropriate, when not, it would influence.
It just seems like one of those topics that you like, especially my generation, you want to resist it. But then when you find out how awesome it is and how much easier it can make you like.
Yeah.
So, and, and that's why I say the mandatory, right, is that what can we do to push a little bit for older folks and don't.
And to identify when it's appropriate, when it's not.
Exactly, yeah.
So, yeah, this is, this is a growing topic and we'll definitely continue to, yeah, it's coming really fast.
Yeah.
We'll continue that.
Just a quick comment on it, if I could, like, when I first started looking at it, I was like, oh, this is one of the silver bullets right here, but it's really not. It's, you have to, like you just said, you gotta use it kind of, you gotta use it appropriately.
Yeah, and you have to know what to ask it, you know, I mean, to, to put in a less, say, to design a lesson plan to teach X, Y, and Z or whatever. It'll give you a blanket lesson plan, but what teachers know, because they're skilled at their craft, is say, okay, now how do I differentiate that so that all students can learn?
Right.
How do I, how do I give the same content and address a language-based learner or a student with. I don't know, math disability or whatever it might be, and if you don't have the training, you don't know what you're asking for, right? And it could use for a lot of things, not just lesson plan, but it's just an example.
Yeah, so, so what is, what is the AI model that, do you know what, what, what source the AI is?
She doesn't promote one particular AI.
All right, so, so you, you could subscribe to any particular AI.
This is in general.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
The district itself might, might advocate one versus the other. Based on the types of, whether it's collecting information and those kind of things, we, yeah.
Sure, and then, and then maybe decide whether there's a subscription model for multiple users, like financially.
Yeah, that's all things we'll have to work out.
Yeah, yeah.
Right now, what we have is. Folks can access to Gemini for insurance.
Not, not many access to Gemini, we don't have a, we don't have.
But, but, but they do have to sort of sign an agreement about limitate, not only that, but using it appropriately, but also understanding what not to do there. Like, for example, you have any student dated to there?
Sure, yeah, 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 there's an ethics.
Yeah, so we have some guidance that we provide to any staff, there were some teachers requesting to access to.
Yeah, and, you know, it's the other thing to keep in mind.
Yes.
So we should refer our qualitative program?
Sure.
Please.
Yes.
AI is.
Can't wait, but.
Ruin papers forever. I got something ChatGPT wrote the year. Uh, kids using it, it's, they need to be trained how to use it properly and how to research properly.
So maybe, do you think developing a policy after this?
After the summer, they have, right, MASC, do they have any policies on this yet?
I can check.
Yeah, I think, I don't, I think we'll take, take this a time, we don't, because I don't know, I know folks are probably rushing to propose a place. So I'm sure there's some out there, but it always hasn't for that rush, you know? But, but it doesn't mean that, you know, so over, over time, we can get good information, and have something that at least is, is a sort of a, a first step on it.
Yes.
Asking AI to write one point.
They don't, they don't evolve it regularly on a regular basis.
This, this reminds me of when Wikipedia became a thing, where students started, you know, taking data from, like, information from Wikipedia. It is a tool, but it shouldn't be a crumble, you know, and moving forward, I think, I think there should be a, a way for, for. Teachers to suss out whether a student had a paper produced for them through AI, I think there's a pretty easy way to do that. You could simply ask them, oh, tell me about what you wrote here and give an example, and they, they, they look like they have a glazed look on their face. Then you know they don't know what the paper's about, I mean, if you can, I don't know if there's a, you know, there's got to be a way we can suss this out, right? There's practical ways to do this.
Not easy, not easy, but definitely, then, then that's what humans fail, probably for that.
We had, I mean, we had to give in-class writing assessments. In front of you, the kid had to write the essay, because, because they'll just Google it, you know, it's, it's, it's not a. It's not a criminal mindset, it's just a kind of deficit mindset for a lot of writers, so. But we're, we're, are we, we're a Google Classroom district, so something will probably come down the plague. From Google.
Right.
Might want to charge us for it.
Yeah, it will.
And we'll pay it.
Yeah.
Uh, great, so yeah, just some first steps on that. We've also developed a healthy phone app, has resource guide for families, we have, you know, just one tip so far, we'll be adding to it next week, I believe. And this was about making the bedroom a no phone zone, notion that at night. That no child, no student needs a phone in the room, okay? And only, basically only bad things can happen. So families, you know, should really take, take the, make the habit. Charge in phones all in the same places, so you can know where they are, and it needs to have better sleep at night. It's a safety for your child, as you know, they're offline and safe. And then also nice things like good sleep and reduce stress. So that QR code leads to our, the present. Iteration of our resource guide, we'll be adding things along to it, and that includes not only the sort of tip, but also includes some resources to support that as well. So that's the update for tonight around our schools, I want, I want to transition to my evaluation here, to get folks updated on the timeline. You received my air reflection, you had the evaluation form and the rubric. Here's the timeline, June eleventh, to get your individual complete evaluation of me to the chair. And then we'll check in on June eleventh, our next meeting, just on progress and see if we post any questions on the process. But then everyone gets, needs to get your evaluation of me to the chair by June eleven. But then she can summarize it and write the final report by the twentieth and get that to all of you, which you will discuss publicly, June twenty fourth. You just recently went through the evaluation not too long ago, twenty three, twenty four, so everyone's pretty well-versed on this. So good luck. Any questions about that?
I'd imagine there would be any.
There are, there'll be on the twenty one, I get that, okay. Ready to move on to Ms. Castle and Ms. Pasquale to.
Castle and I are gonna share the presentation on ML learners. And first one, let's start, English Sign language update. This is really wordy, but you want to go over the general.
So thank you so much for having us tonight, I really appreciate it, so if you could share a little bit about. We are working with, working with and working on with our multilingual learners, so we follow the same guidelines, the same. The same distribution of all of our students being engaged, successful lifelong learners. As well as ensuring that all of our students feel welcome and that they belong, and also that they're all learning. We ensure that we have access to the curriculum, all of the content for all of our multilingual learners. All of our clubs, all of our classes, any of our programming, all of our students do have these exact same equitable access.
And then just a quick, oh, like, this is data sheet, I'll highlight you.
So this is just about a little bit about our multilingual program, so as you can see, we've got, you know, about eleven, we do have eleven point four staff. Language, languages spoken, we have twenty two different languages, that really hasn't changed much. Except that our languages now, we are, I'm the most prevalent is Spanish, with Brazilian Portuguese being second. And Arabic, Italian are still, are still. Pretty much in, in the running, we do have some Asian Creole this year, some Urdu and some Pashto as well. We've got three hundred and ninety eight LEP students, limited English proficient, and these numbers are as of May twentieth. So there's, it's just, as I, as Amy mentioned, it's just kind of a, a picture of who our ML learners are in the district, just a snapshot. So access testing for our multilingual learners is similar to the MCAS for other students, right? So in January of every year, our MLs are identified, multilingual learner students are assessed in its four different domains they're assessed. So it's listening, reading, writing, and speaking, and. It's not an easy test for our students, and a lot of our students that are on the older side, they struggle a little bit because they're coming into. Into our schools and they already are, they're proficient in their native language for the most part, and some are not. So they do, they do sometimes struggle with really doing a lot of that, the comprehension and this B reading. So it's not an easy task, we are working towards, our, our staff is fantastic, just working with our students to really get them ready. Long free tests and just really working and honing on all of the four different domains. So we are making progress so that our students are, are able to do well on access.
Can I interrupt just for a minute?
Yes.
The test itself, what is, you mean, ten thousand foot, ten thirty second snapshot of what the test entails?
So we didn't, so it's all online, which, so that also, unless the student has an accommodation, so it's in, it's computer-based test. Which sometimes is a struggle, especially for our newer students, because a lot of our students don't have all the access to computers. So they have a microphone, they have to speak into the microphone, it's a speaking component, they have to also listen and be able to comprehend. Kind of what's either being said to them, and they need to read a clap, or they need to kind of summarize it into the microphone, and that's where our kids really. But our kids, a lot of kids, English is not their first language, they struggle because it's not easy. And as they are older, as I said, it's a little bit harder, our younger students seem to be, because they're a little bit more tech savvy, they seem to be able to kind of catch on quicker. They progress a little bit quicker with access, but. You know, it's, it's, it's difficult.
And this quick follow-up, the, the kids that maybe struggle a little bit, there's obviously some disappointment or discouragement that maybe comes with that? Or do they kind of hang in there and keep?
They do, I'm just saying, they hang in there, and we do a lot of work on making sure that when we meet with families, we send reports home to families, and we send letters home to families. Just kind of explaining what access is and kind of some points before, like just the MCAS, what you should do to prep your student, you know, early bedtime, things like that. The letters go home, and we just make sure that we ensure our families and our kids, we feel that being bilingual is a gift. So we don't expect them to ace access the first time that they take it, it may take them a few times before they really are able. Because even the speaking piece, I mean, there's, when they're measuring those different domains, they have to score well in two of them. So it's, it's two in particular, it's a three point nine and a four point two overall score.
The teachers do a really nice job of being encouraging and supporting our students. At the high school in particular, sometimes we find students weren't taking the test very seriously. And, and at the high, our high school EL department has really taken the initiative to get, have a student say ownership of their assessments. And they chart their growth and they set goals, and last year, we saw a great jump in language proficiency at high school in particular. Largely because of the dedication of the teachers really getting them to, students really own their scores and want to succeed on it. And they, they kind of step on them.
True, so are these great level assessments, are they?
So in the level of proficiency, and so this slide kind of talks a little bit about. When you start, when you enter a language, you're coming at entering, so level one, if we say it's a level one language proficiency, it's someone who does, doesn't have a lot of English. And it goes all the way up to level six. So entering, beginning, developing, expanding, bridging, and then reaching. So it will measure their, their efficiency, and sometimes we'll hear that a student is a two point nine in, in. Listening, but they might be a one point eight in speaking, because they're taking it earlier, and they're not ready to, to give out the language. So we watch it develop in stages. Do you want to say more about that, sorry?
Yeah, no, that's good, no, and, and we do, we, a lot of the work that we do is a lot of vocabulary development, a lot of work of comprehension. As well as we do work with them, with our students, to do some pre-testing, so that they kind of know what to expect. So we don't just kind of put them in front of a computer with the microphone and the first chance they, you know, when they're taking the access, because they would just, it would just be difficult. So we do do a lot of that free, and especially at the high school, they did a lot of that. At work getting kids ready, they had, you know, just different, different sessions that they had, they split it up a bit, and they do the same thing at the elementary in the middle. So they're really getting into engaging the students more, but also making them feel part of the process, so they know what their benchmark is, what their target is. Because then they feel more invested in their, you know, in their class and invest in their project.
And the general guideline is that they, as it says, it takes about six years to obtain a language, so that the six steps. So, but students progress faster on that, it depends on, I'm still depending on exposure. And then, I'm gonna talk about this one.
So these are, these are updated as of September twenty four, these are different recommended periods of English language instruction, and we, why we had that kind of amended. Because the department that understands and realizes, this is not a requirement, these, these guidelines are a recommendation. Two to three periods, so if you look at the levels, one point oh to two point oh, it's foundational, at least two to three periods. No less than forty five minutes by a certified DSL teacher. We do our very best to make sure that happens, however, does not always happen every day in every classroom. And across the state, because there is a shortage of ML staff, this really doesn't happen, even in the largest communities with bilingual staff. It's a goal that we are working towards, but we understand that these are recommended minutes, and we do absolutely try to do our best. And then the next level is transitional, and those are on level three point oh to four point oh students, and those a little bit, a little bit less. We use the discretion to determine the amount of ESL instruction provided, and those are our students that have more proficiency, they're able to do more of the classwork in English. They can take in more content, and they are much, much more able to participate in a classroom in English.
Here's just a distribution of our ML students across the district.
One thing I'll just add on this, really important is. East Veterans, you'll see, you know, except for Gloucester I has the, you know, highest number of ML students. And this year. They had a tremendous challenge fully staffing, because they had three ML teachers, at one point they're down to one. About a month and a half, I'd say, maybe a month ago, you know, they finally fully staffed, three. You know, so that's been a real challenge for us, and as, as Chris already said, you know, around the state, district challenge, we're having enough ML instructors. We're suffering the same challenge, but that's just really significant. Difficult, that one of these spaces this year. And so, and therefore, our students really struggle because, you know.
Just as a point of interest, I mean, is there, is there any way like to engage with the community that, you know, of. People that English is a second language to them, and to say, hey. If you're, you know, is this, is this a program that could be implemented to allow people in the community that speak different languages to help out?
We do have a tutor, full-time tutor, and when we were short-staffed at ESET, we did divert her to ESET, and it's more of the time. But she's typically spread out among several schools.
And I was just saying that we've also reached out to all the colleges in the area, as well as Matsal, which is the, basically the multilingual learner kind of. Umbrella for multilingual learners in the state of Massachusetts, to try to find out how, we posted it across all of the employment boards, to try and get additional staff. And unfortunately, everyone is struggling again across the state, this is not a Gloucester problem, it's across the state, the state, it's really, it's difficult to get teachers. So as far as working with, we are looking to work with community colleges to try to get some of our parents, we would love to have them, but. We need them to, to be ready, because a lot of our parents would love to work, right, in our schools, but they, the ones that I work with in particular. Feel they need more English before they can be in this world, but we are working with them on that.
There's a level awareness out there, including there wasn't, we had a, a couple staff members. I think, I think one, that's higher D veterans, come to our job, local job fair, it's not, maybe one, maybe two actually. And then as, as Chris had, our tutor, bilingual tutor came, he also is community member as well, so. Did some of that, and I think, and, and also better connections in there, especially in the Brazilian Portuguese community. And so, you know, continue to make sure, trying to develop the. Better, just, just, I don't know, pipeline, that's not quite the right word, like, those opportunities to make your folks aware.
And just to point out on this slide, for Beeman, ESET, and THUM, the larger portion of our students are those level one and level two. Language speakers, so they're kind of just putting on their, starting their English development. And then there's a five-year historical growth. So we've about doubled since FY twenty one. Our staffing has not doubled, but we have added a tutor and, and been more strategic about it.
The other piece is, because before this, we're growing at ten percent per year. So growth, as, as Amy said, you know, doubling, in this, in this, from one to nine, three on eight. But you'll also see that it's going to slow down and level off a little bit, I mean, the fact that. Essentially the same with three last year, this year, doesn't mean it won't be up again next year. But that's just very surprising to us, because it had been accelerating or just growing so significantly, you know, just. At twenty one, twenty two, it was six students, and twenty one, twenty three, obviously was. Six, no, six, so.
We've seen it.
This is the surprise here.
You want to highlight something?
Oh, just kidding, um, yes, so, so some of the, that are happening in our ML programming, so. So we have adopted a new program, those are for our students who are newer to the English language, so that program has been adopted throughout for all grades, K, K through twelve. We are currently looking at other, repiling other programs for all of our other learners, our other multilingual learners that are not newcomers. So we are doing those pilots across board, our teachers are currently doing some research and working with some of the lists of hyped, highly.
High quality.
High quality, I'm curious, thank you, HQIM, to research those programs and material, and they're working together kind of as teams. We will hopefully have something ready for adoption for winter twenty twenty six, that's our goal. But we want to make sure that it's a thoughtful process and that they feel comfortable with the program that we select. Which is not easy, because we're looking across the board from K all the way to grade twelve.
Right, so last year, we, we secured a curriculum for the newcomers, and now we're going to the next level up, keep moving to improve.
And that, and that, those are areas we have never had to run.
And then, so the product for an SEI district, you want to explain what that means?
So we're a sheltered English immersion district, which is all of our students are immersed in the English language, so they are in classrooms with all of the learners. So they're not specific bilingual programs, and this is, all of the Spanish speakers are in one classroom, or all the Brazilian Portuguese speakers are, are in another classroom. All of our students are immersed in the English language, because we, that is kind of the route that we've chosen for Gloucester, that we feel is going to be the best route. The first, kind of first tier is the identification, which happens at the time of registration, we look at the home language server, review all of that. And then we move on to kind of screening them, seeing what their levels are, and that's where we have the classification, and then we look at what the service is going to be, which means. What's going to be the best route for this child, so it's a push-in support, pull-out support, small group support. And it really depends upon the individual child and how that learner really is working within the classroom, or what type of supports they may need. The goal is reclassification, and that's where we come into access testing. It's an overall score of four point two with a lower score three point nine, which is not an easy mark to make when you're learning English for the first time.
So students who meet that mark are released from the ML program or services, but they're monitored for four years. To make sure that their growth continues, and so they spend one more time within the classroom. The other thing we added this year are SEI leaders, so this is not just our ML teachers, these are teachers from across the district, and it's a committee that we met monthly. To talk about how to promote SEI strategies, or strategies to support English language learners within the general education classroom. How we can support them more and help with some professional development throughout the district. It's been a pretty successful group, some people from across the district that really took the read, and as we talked about, language. And as, um, we talked about language objectives and how we make sure that all students, we're at language objectives during our lessons. We talked about a few other things, um, elevations, which we'll talk about in the next slide, I think, or two slides.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So I, I need like a scenario. So I, a sixth grader is exposed to English language for a year. And she's in high school now. When she goes to a classroom, because we're SEI, what, what does that look like? Like.
Classroom is taught in English.
She's good classroom, taught in English, yeah.
We're not translating, um, it's taught, taught in English. The idea is the more you are immersed in. English, the faster you will pick it up. Um, we certainly give supports.
Supports how?
So there's, there's SEI strategies, for example, vocabulary. We might give pictures, picture cards to go along with the vocabulary if we're talking about something.
Yeah.
Um, we might pre-teach some of the academic vocabulary. Um, we might give them sentence starters to, into, if they're starting to write. So that they're just filling in words. We can do scaffolds, um, to make sure that they can access the curriculum as best they can. Um, but it, it's low going at first and the, one of the most, you know. Exciting parts is when students start to, start to, you start to see it and they start to, to respond or write or talk and raise their hand in class. Um, we've had teachers that will pre-teach a lesson, um, so that when it's taught in a general classroom, that the students are already prepared to, ready to, to engage. So there's different strategies that we use, um, to help pull students into that. Um, it's definitely hard, um, learning the language is hard.
Another, another piece of that is also other students helping them out.
Right.
So they're either, well, those other students are more, you know, these students.
Right.
That's part of what, I mean, it's not, not designed to do that, but that's happened as well. And that, that's helpful.
Thank you.
A few questions, seems like everyone's asking. I was gonna wait, but, um. So we have a sheltered English immersion program and is that a DESI program or is that something we decided as a district?
So it's a, it's a philosophy that the district is following, various districts following, the SEI just, uh, not that I would say. Um, and an alternative might be to have bilingual teaching. You have like a, a, a fully Spanish speaking class or a fully.
Mm-hmm.
Brazilian Portuguese, um, speaking class. Um, that doesn't necessarily accelerate the learning English.
Yes.
Um, and it's not economically feasible to have, if we have twenty-two different languages in the district, if we can't have that many different offerings. Um, so as it, as DESI requires that we choose a method of delivery and we have chosen SEI.
Yeah, it's a complicated situation, I understand. And that's what I'm trying to wrap my head around is, um. You know, on one hand, you know, we have several tiers of, of like English proficiency for, uh, you know, multilingual learners. And there, a lot of them are starting from different starting points.
Yeah.
And, and complicated with the fact that, um, you know, we have, uh, SLIFE, uh, um.
Life, life.
SLY, is that how you say that?
So students with limited, um.
Academic.
Interrupted, yeah.
Background from their, where they're coming from, where they're em- uh, immigrating from. Um, so I, in, in the, um, the hard part is, you know, when you look at. The academic reports about like, you know, the growth percentiles and we know that this group is struggling a lot. So I have to question, like, are we choosing the right path? If, if, say, a lot of these students might have limited academic backgrounds in their home countries, when they, when they immigrate here. It's like, how, how do you place a student in general ed if their, their background isn't like. Even up to, to the rigor of, of what we're expecting our regular students, I mean, you know, general ed students to.
So the recommendation from DESI and, and agree is that you, you place them with their, uh, age peers, age appropriate peers.
Yeah.
And, um, you give them the opportunity, the supports to gain the language as soon as, as quickly as they can.
So I, I understand, yeah, I understand the strategy. I'm just wondering if there are a few grades behind their peers, like in their age. Is that an appropriate thing to, to expect them to, to get up to speed if they're behind, like, I, you know, academically already, but maybe, I don't know.
Or.
Couple of years.
And yeah, that's, that's where that newcomer programming.
Yeah.
Comes into play as well. So we have that program that we, that is across the district. That, that SLY students or students who, um, who may just be newcomers, right, not SLY, different for newcomers. Those students would work with the newcomer program. They may have some, uh, pull-out scenario with a teacher. It'll be a smaller group and they'll really work on the vocabulary. The, um, just honestly, babbles, constant lending, all of those things and it's.
Not the, the language that I'm worried about, it's the academics.
So where, where this comes, you know, as, as a most obvious kind of challenge is at the high school. So if a student comes to our country at sixteen and hasn't been in school for the last two to three, four years. We put them in a high school classroom, but they don't have enough credits to be with a sixteen-year-old.
Yeah.
Right? And they have to get credit. So we have opportunities for, um, after-school tutoring, we have credit recovery. We have, we just, um, Miss Castle's working on a grant to, so that we can really give, boost students with their credits that they don't have. So they can meet them where they are. So we give opportunities for students that are. To, to be a sixteen, seventeen-year-old freshman is, is, is not good for really anybody, right? So credit-wise, we have to give them more, um, opportunities to a, advance, right, and to fill those holes. And it's not easy and, and it's not a, it's not a magic answer to it.
Sure, I mean, I, I just want to like look at this like holistically. You know, the other question I, you know, while I'm asking is, like, you know, as far as learning English, like coming from another country, not your primary language. You know, it's been said before that it's really important to, to continue that over the summer. If you say go back to your household, you don't speak a lick of English. And what I've been hoping to see developed is a program for over the summer.
So we have some, um, at the elementary level, we have an ML classroom at our summer learning, um.
And then what's the up, uh?
And then, uh, we, some of through the credit recovery options at the high school, we have those, um, opportunities. Um, and we can.
And O'Meara's gonna do, um, the transitions from fifth to sixth.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, a lot of our ML students will participate in that, just so they kind of get a little bit more accustomed to O'Meara programming. So that they have a little bit more confidence going into the middle school.
Yeah, so, you know, how many students have taken part in that? I'm wondering percentage-wise of the English language.
Well, there's limited spots and then there are students that just don't come in summer because they.
Sure, yeah, I know that's.
They don't choose to, right. Um, what we can, the best we can do is offer supports and, and continue to do that and do outreach. Which Chris does a fabulous job with outreach to families. Um, I don't know what's on this slide or the next sheet. Chris has, um, organized English classes for adults as well.
True.
So that we can get their families in to start having them learn, uh, English classes as well. Is that maybe on the next slide?
Excellent.
But yeah, it, it's hard and, but we have to just keep doing it. And Chris is tirelessly reaching out to families and trying to connect them. Um, I also want to mention our, uh, family engagement specialists, um, obviously Nina Parsons and Vanessa Lindberg. Who reach out to families all the time, um, making sure they feel connected with the school, letting them know of all these summer opportunities or after-school opportunities and what it might be. Um, Carmen Acaso, our, uh, attendants and supervisors, she reaches out to families all the time. Um, so, you know, it's, it's a lot of work and it's a lot of time and we've got a great team that's reaching out. And, yeah.
Yeah, I'm hoping that the community can actually collaborate with the school system and, you know, there could be like after, like, you know, summer programs, like even work programs or, or anything. You know, in one way or another, keep them up with their, their English, you know, over the summer.
Doesn't Wellspring have an adult program?
Wellspring has an adult, um, adult.
With a mentor of the results.
Well, mentor, yep.
Um, so to follow up on the academics, it always kind of, um, question I've always had is if we're testing. Students, you know, MCAST, for example, in math. It's, you know, they're testing them with English instructions and are we really trying to figure out if they know math? Or if they know how to solve the question in English first before they can even approach the math? And I'm wondering about those kinds of thought about the content of what they're, you know, learning. They're, obviously they're trying to learn our English as quickly as they can, but we also need them to be able to learn the curriculum and the content. That they may absolutely excel if they had more of their own language as that support. Where they then can, at, at the time the English becomes good enough.
Mm-hmm.
They then flip and they can then do the exams or do the assignments in English.
And test the whole community.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm just wondering, is there like a translation sometimes so that, so that you're, they're not struggling with the English part? There's, they're.
Yeah, so for MCAST, they're allowed a word-to-word dictionary.
Yeah.
Um, so that, that means it doesn't define what the word is, but it will say water is agua or, you know, it will just translate word for word.
Yeah.
Um, but, yeah, it's definitely, it's definitely difficult. Do you want to say more?
Yeah, it's very hard for them.
So you're saying a physical dictionary?
They have a physical word-to-word dictionary during a, a MCAST test. They have access to it.
But then they'll provide complete translations. That's kind of weird. Like, when you do the book, they have to.
They'll provide definitions. No, no, they don't, like, I mean.
What I'm saying to the material, no, no. Yeah, I'm saying like they could, they could, they could do a word-for-word translation, but they can't get that on the test itself.
Yeah.
But they get the book to do it the word while they're taking the test.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so as, you know, we're mentioning that this is difficult stuff. We have definitely things we can, work on to continue to strengthen our ML programming. So we are continuing to strengthen our family community engagement, the support through access, referrals, coordination. Um, interpretation and translation services when needed and appropriate. Um, Chris holds coffee hours at every school to really welcome the students in, uh, and the families in. There's an LPAC, which is similar to the CPAC. It's a parent organization, um, which you have, um, a parent that's running it now.
I do, at East Veterans. Um, it took a little bit of time, but yes, so she's running it and it, that was the intent, the intent of the LPAC is for it to be basically parent-led. So we're excited about that.
Yep, and Chris goes all over for student registration to help, help students, um, register in classroom of schools. And I'll let you talk more about the student engagement and support.
Sure. Um, so we, as, as we kind of mentioned, we've already adopted our newcomer program. Um, these are just some of the highlights of the pro, the different things that we've done. So adopted our newcomer program. We've got our SEI leaders in place. Um, and they really do, they support, they collaborate, they do a fantastic job kind of lifting those SEI strategies. For all of our teachers across the district and they're able to, um, have conversations about what they feel would work best. Um, what, what some of the language objectives would be, how a, a lesson could be more effective for a student that might be a multilingual learner. So they've been really, uh, fantastic in helping to support our SEI, um, programming. Um, transition planning meetings, so our students going from grade five to grade six and then our students going from grade eight to grade nine. Um, we had transition meeting with, I had transitioned with all of the ML staff as well. So the receiving and the sending staff and each of the schools have a list, um, of students that not only is just a list, but it also is kind of, um. A roadmap as to the student's personality, some of the students' likes, dislikes, some of the challenges, some of their strengths. So that they really have a good sense going into their new building and their new environment as to how that child learns and what, how that child is best successful. Um, we have bi-weekly staff meetings now, um, where we, Amy and I meet with ML staff. And we really hone in on skills and conversations about how we can best support our ML learnings and that's across the district. So our ML teachers can collaborate with one another from grades grade to twelve, so they really can see, you know, kind of that transition from grade to grade. And they can chat about whether or not students, family engagement, how we can better support them, what their needs are. Um, and those have been really, I think, really effective with our teachers. They seem to be really happy to have that voice. Um, and then let Amy talk about elevation.
So elevations is a software we, you know, our second or third year, um, where it has all of our student data. The language proficiencies are in there. Teachers can look up and see exactly where students are, uh, as far as their access scores. Um, and then, uh, a wonderful part of it is they have, we, they can do descriptors. So it was, they, they can look up on, um, individual students, what can they be expecting from their students based on. So you might be able to, um, it might tell you that you can expect the students to describe the answer to you verbally, but not ready to write it or whatever the case may be. Um, it also provides professional development for our stu-, for our teachers. Um, and we've rolled that out this year where they can look at different SEI strategies and then they kind of read up on it online. And then they go test it, that they can look at and compare it to their own student data. And then they go practice it in their classroom and they write a reflection back into the program. They can earn PDPs. Um, if they complete a whole fifteen module, they can earn a in-service credit. So our teachers are using it for professional development to hone their craft. And it's not just a professional development, it's kind of out there, it's linked to the students in front of them, which is always beneficial. Um, so that's something we have available. And then highlighting our program, um, you want to talk about Jesse Kane?
Yep, so, um, I heard, um, had heard about some of the work that we're doing with our migrant students and our collaboration with the migrant program. So we have an after-school program that's been running for about four to five weeks, um, at one of our elementary schools and it has been fantastic. We have, uh, we've had fantastic attendance. We have a parent who, um, has a huge hand. He actually transports the kids for us every, twice a week, every single week. Um, attends the great, kids are great. It's not only for, um, it's, it's really great for them socially, but it's also been, um, homework support. And learning how to play games and getting along with one another and also vocabulary development. So we've got a bilingual, our bilingual tutors in there working with, um, a person from the migrant program. So that's another way we're supporting somewhere of our elementary, um, students who maybe, uh, need a little bit of extra support with, um, acquiring English. And then we've got before-school tutoring as well. So that is a small group of students at the elementary level again. Um, and we have one of our ML teachers that works on language development and vocabulary development comprehension. And it's a great small group. Parents bring them early, they stay for an hour, they get breakfast. And it's really been, um, helpful in getting those kids some additional support that they may need. Uh, as far as summer learning, I know we spoke about that, uh, and the, a lot of our ML students, um, and our migrant students as well. And other students who we feel would really benefit, um. Our Haven is doing some enrichment programming twice a week. So if they attend, the kids attend, um, summer learning twice a week. Our Haven will provide them with, um, some classes, some courses, and they do some fantastic projects. And a lot of it is, um, BTS, which is Visual Thinking Strategies, which it really supports students who are struggling acquiring English. Or they just need some extra support because it's more of the visual and they're able to have a lot of hands-on practice. So the kids love it, um, it's easily, um, easily adaptable and the parents come and they enjoy it. So it's really been fantastic for us. Um, and this year we've had our parent English classes again, um, all-time record, we had twenty-four parents attended, which is really great. We're really excited. Um, we've had some fantastic comments from our parents. They're just so thrilled to have this opportunity because, um, they want to be here, they want to support their kids. We, we all want to support all of our kids. Um, and the way that we teach them, it's a little bit different. Um, Wellspring has classes, but they are not able to always attend. So we offer classes that are more, um, structured for classrooms. So for example, they, uh, we talk about how they can communicate with their child teacher, how to make dental appointments. It's the real practical information that our parents are asking for. How to access email, what does the, uh, email look like? How they can have a conference with the teacher. So it's the practical skills that they really are asking for. Um, and then the great news is the approved ML-focused tier focus monitoring. That was kind of a long process.
That's when DESI comes in and really takes a very deep dive into our programming. Um, and Chris did a ton of work of getting all of the documentation and making sure that we met all the standards and. And that would know further.
Alright, no more monitoring. So we are good to go until, um, twenty-eight, twenty-nine. So we're excited about that.
And we had, my discussion and questions, but we asked them along with, is there any others?
Yeah. Um, Arabic. Where are Arabic speakers coming from? And how is that, I mean, Spanish, Brazilian Portuguese and Italian.
Yep.
Right, are sort of a category. Um, where, where are Arabic speakers coming from? So we haven't seen any in the past year or two, if, if we have any translation that has been provided. We do everything for our Arabic and our Swahili, all of our Hason Creole, those three in particular, we do all of that through Language Line. Which is the platform that we use.
And you're asking what part of the world?
Oh, which, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, it appears that was one of the most common languages. It is. We haven't, I haven't had any in the last two years.
I know a few from Egypt, I believe, and I'm not sure. I'm just curious.
Yeah.
How.
And it's, some of the folks that, that kind of come to Lost, we're always kind of like, why blah, we, we are happy to have them, but we're like, oh. Right, oh, I have a sister who's.
Yeah, yeah, I think I, I've had, uh, students from Iran before.
That's true, they don't always hear.
I know, I'm trying to just think.
Yeah.
Pakistan.
They've been.
A lot of high school students.
Yeah, no, I'm curious. And the other thing I just wanted to note, um, and you sort of touched on it, but. How many of the students coming in have never been in school?
how many of the students coming in have never been in school?
How many slave students?
Yeah. Uh, well, no, 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 it's in the chart. Do you mind if it's slave students?
Oh, um, I'm sorry. Yeah.
That's, that's a category.
Right, no, but in this, in this, uh, which one? Three ninety-eight, three ninety-eight current ML students, but about twenty-one.
Yes.
It says especially for Beeman and just vets, sixteen and twenty of the, of time in school. So that could be a kindergarten or it could be a fifth grader.
Yeah, first time in school, first time in the.
For a year in US.
For a year in the US.
Or at US.
Certainly means white.
Okay, so it's not.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
And then, uh, so the rollout for teachers to get SCI endorsed, is that?
So we have almost a hundred percent.
Right, so that was one of our big pieces.
Almost a hundred percent SCI endorsed.
Tier focus monitoring, yes.
And so that is an endorsement from Jesse that teachers have to take a class and to be endorsed and apply them to be. So we have al- almost a hundred percent.
I think we're meeting too, and we have, so what we've done is we've worked with community resources and provided them with the information each is under for a class. So we really stand to opposite because we know that the department then is really monitoring that.
Yeah. Uh, my, my comment that I tell a lot of people, um, is that, like, I got SCI endorsed twelve, thirteen, a long time ago. Um, but in Gloucester, we didn't necessarily need those skills or have the population in front of us. Teachers that could have been SCI endorsed for fifteen years. And our population changed so drastically over the last four or five, all of a sudden, I, I tell teachers, we're gonna dust off that endorsement.
Right, right.
And so that's why we're giving more professional development and having SCI leaders to remind teachers they're already endorsed, but they haven't used that, those skills in a long time.
Right.
So let's dust off that endorsement and remember all those skills and implement them. So we, we're well, and SCI endorsed, we just need to remind teachers and encourage them.
Yeah.
That's, that's why we're doing some.
It's required for recertification.
Gotcha.
Yes.
For kids that, teachers that, or staff to interface with kids.
Right.
Uh, just a, one comment, uh, just as a, just want to say that, uh, I'm very grateful for the work that you can give.
You've worked, it's really impressive, the work that you do. The teachers that I know that are involved with MF, uh, you know, learners is an impressive group and thankful that the staff has increased at East Vets too. That's really, really important.
We're lucky.
One of the things that James Cook said, it, I don't know if it was the last meeting or, when we're looking at the scores, uh, for ML learners, is that they kind of set goals for themselves and kind of reach those goals. And I don't think there's anything more impressive than that, you know, just setting small goals for themselves. They really are kind of the shining, one of the shining stars in our schools. I'm very, very thankful for what you've done.
I do really want to appreciate Chris and all the work. I mean, you brought in some parts of it tonight, certainly, you know, and curriculum, you know, and, and that work, um, working closely with Amy, but also the family support you brought about tonight, really, so many of these things, I mean, so many of these pieces, coffee hours, LPAC, the mode of illustration, the English classes, you know, referrals and families, the, the, the translation, our support of families, it's all new in the past few years. Okay, it was all new stuff, it's all essential stuff, supporting our students, our families. But she's also involved, like she said, desk church focus monitoring was a total bear, um, for a couple of years and so much work on that. But community connections that you create, uh, work with other partner, you know, partner agencies and, and having the party to support us and support our EL families, um, who also are, you know, our registration, our registrar basically, um, and then also supporting, uh, homeless and migrant families and working with the state and other agencies and that. So just a tribute to you, Chris, and really appreciation of the work you do in so many areas that really touch, you know, some of our, um, most important families, but also some of our families that, um, are, you know, basically channeling as well. So we appreciate your, your love of and support of the kids and the families.
Thank you, thank you, we are a team. I agree.
And entitled. And title.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris, good job.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. Good job. Thanks for coming and waiting.
Okay, um, next item in the business is, uh, uh, the fiscal year two thousand point six.
Okay, so, uh, this is, um, the last really official presentation on the budget process, which, uh, starts in November every year, a little bit late this, this year. Um, it was publicly in, in January. At this point, I've given, uh, presentation updates, um, and, uh, revisions along the way. Um, so we'll do this pretty fast, um, but that's because, um, we've been doing it for quite some time. Um, so, uh, as we say in the Gloucester schools, everything matters, everybody belongs, and every student learns, and that's what we pay attention to, uh, when we're building a budget. So just a quick overview, um, our schools and students are doing well. Um, just a reminder that, and you've seen plenty of examples tonight, um, there's tremendous learning and opportunities happening on classrooms of schools every day. Uh, and we know it can be better, always striving to be better for our students, for our staff and our families. Um, we know what the work is ahead, we understand where we need to invest, invest. This budget, um, makes some steps, little important steps in those directions. Um, and, uh, with this budget, we're going to continue to provide those robust opportunities, um, all across our schools. We're also gonna, uh, be able to invest in building our support specifically for our special education students. Um, um, all of these. Um, so just as a reminder, folks, again, um, we don't face really significant cuts a year ago. Um, and we're building that back, uh, bit by bit. We're in much stronger fiscal position this year than we were a year ago. Um, a lot of that has to do with the work the school committee has done with the mayor, mayor's support, really making sure that the school is getting our fair share of the city, um, contributing to the city's financial situation right now. Um, and also just a reminder of folks that, you know, that improvement and that funding increase, it takes time. You know, we can't build all the way back from last year, but we are doing it, I think, in a methodical way. And we also, as I've shown you, have a real plan for where we need to continue to invest in the coming years. Um, so the budget, uh, that we're putting in front of you today is four, four point, uh, two million dollars. Um, eighty-five percent of that budget is, uh, supports our, all of our staff, through salaries and benefits, also some retired staff as well. Um, our budget is prioritized, uh, better connect, um, uh, totally focused on special education and strengthening our instruction and support, our connecting, uh, better text and first education, general education, um, improving our programs, um, and also supporting related services as well. Um, and we also have made some changes this year to help us continue to move towards a more sustainable financial model and reduce our reliance on some grants we've been utilizing. So in terms of building the FY twenty-six budget, all of our work is based on our four priorities that have been planned for ongoing improvement, as you see here. Um, well, we're headed over time in these areas, so continue to strengthen instruction, student learning and achievement, continue to deepen student belonging, and then mention our rate strength and special education practices and programs, support of all the learners, including multilingual learners. I think in the, in the coming years, we've been adding quite a bit of resources to support, like curriculum wise, um, also technology and data use, um, and also with some of our, uh, SCI leaders, as you just heard, but also we'll need to continue to look at staffing support as well in coming years. Um, and then continue to strengthen our range, the wide range of program we have in O'Malley and Gloucester. All right. This, as I've shown you before, and, uh, is probably the most important piece we have in the budget book this year, a new addition, which is looks at the staff we want to add in coming years to, uh, achieve our goals in these areas, which we just covered. That's a really important piece that anybody in the district or community can look at to see where we, uh, what we're making, making investments. Um, and just go over, as we have, uh, none of this has changed. The investments we're gonna make through the FY twenty-six budget in special education, in curriculum and, and operational resources, uh, we're gonna focus on those two tonight. So in terms of, uh, building a coordinated system of support, so, um, with Mike Jarvis' leadership and working, uh, across the schools, again, a, a good sense of where we are, where we need to go, we are really wanting to build a coordinate system of support that has these three, uh, layers, uh, so to speak, that work well together. Um, and you need to work well together. So our inclusion program, that's what's happening every day in our classrooms, um, and really focusing on inclusive practices, including co-teaching, um, and making sure that students with disabilities are getting the proper instruction in the generalized setting and not separately on their own. Um, and also using inclusive practices and co-teaching, really better connection with special education. So we are ensuring that our values in Gloucester public schools, you know, are about that all of our students are all our students, not separating either by approach or methodology or just, um, uh, value that some, you know, that students are different or deserve different education because of, um, their, their, their status with or without disabilities. So then services, so in addition to special education, um, some students may need related services. In any areas, be reading instruction, be occupational therapy, be behavior support, making sure we have those services providing, provided at each of our schools, um, to the necessary level. And then the most, uh, and then an area that, um, are making, uh, you know, next year we're making significant progress in these, uh, described programs, both in better definition, but also, um, improved staffing, but also making sure we have a continuum on our programs pre-K through twelve. So talked a lot about that despite a cycle, but those are really crucial pieces. And we've heard, you know, from staff and families and others, um, including myself and our leaders here, about the need to really improve, uh, these approaches, you know, and, and improve our, you know, this, uh, special education support. So hopefully making step, step on that. This includes initial steps on our KDA inclusion program, as we've described to you, um, and then gave details in, in April about this really continuation of co-teaching, uh, that's happening. It's been, has been happening in our schools or has happened in our schools and sort of, um, growing that, but also revitalizing it as well. Um, able to add specialized reading, education, reading support, um, uh, West Parish's vets next year and intend to develop, um, more specialized reading support in our other, other elementary schools in the coming years. Um, and then, as I already mentioned, strengthen their KDA district-wide programs, particularly, um, in our emotional behavioral, um, for elementary, um, and growing that pilot program, which we started this year at both Beeman and, um, at West Parish. Um, having a defined and small staff emotional behavioral program at O'Malley, adding a life skills program at O'Malley, um, and then developing clear program descriptions and instant entrance to X criteria. Um, we already have good drafts of those, which our staff and the programs have already looked at, reviewed, and given some feedback on, but those will continue to develop as we go into the new year and our staff, you know, really work with those programs in a more deliberate way and even help refine those, um, descriptions. Uh, what's important there is both clarity of what our program is trying to achieve and the students who they serve, but also entering the extra criteria, so families, um, and staff, you know, know what the process is, um, if a student needs a higher level of support, um, but also to make sure that, um, you know, notified process to make sure the students who, um, need those services get them, um, as opposed to, you know, pushing kids towards a program, um, for other reasons. Um, and then strengthening our support and supervision, uh, in special education, um, uh, for stat members of West Parish and Beeman. Uh, these are some real position adjustments, as we talked about at length. Um, we were able to add some new positions this year, um, but also reallocating them, um, to higher priority areas, um, and areas of higher need, um, and also doing some balancing out of staffing across, uh, to the elementary schools. Um, so again, always, as I said before, again and again, these are difficult choices, but needed ones in, in order to make sure we are providing the service that our students, we have now, um, where they are, um, and make sure we're doing that in a way that's, um, makes low sense for them.
Yeah, can I? Yeah, I have a question. So, um, we've talked about this a number of times, um, but I want to really express again my concern about adding that program to Beeman. And, um, I understand that there's a logic to putting the two emotional behavioral programs together. Um, you know, but what I see is a district where we have two brand-new elementary schools and two very old elementary schools, so there's not, there's not equity in physical plant in those schools. And Plum Cove and Beeman continue to operate with aging facilities without much space. So Beeman will lose their library to do this. So we're, for me, like, we're going backwards, right? To take away an elementary library at this stage feels like exactly what we don't want to be doing. And so I understand that, I, I just, I'm, I'm, you know, there's a number of issues. There's cameras at Beeman for, for behavioral issues. There's big woods around Beeman, like, there's just a number of structural issues that, um, I'm sure you've considered. But, um, I just, I really want to express how concerned I am by this and how much, um, it makes, I'm sure it makes sense in lots of ways, but I, 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 I don't know if we're looking at the entire picture of what these, of what the buildings are that are available and how it impacts, you know, a, a school without the physical structures built for these kinds of programs. We have two that are built and two that are not. So to take a program and put it into Beeman, to have the principal lose their office, to have the library gone in order to put that there, um, I'm just, I'm very concerned about it. And I, and I really, um, I want to express that as strongly as I can. I just think that we're looking at one piece, but there's other pieces, um, that get lost. And especially, I mean, the library as it is, it's only half a room because the coaches meet in the back of the room. So now to lose it entirely and put it on the stage, which is what Plum Cove has been dealing with, which is, which was always what we didn't want, um, just feels like, uh, it just feels like there's just not equity in the spaces as it is. And then we're sort of putting this into an old building with less capacity. Um, and I, and I just want to express that as clearly as I can, that I'm very concerned about this. And I, I'm really concerned that this is going to lead in a direction we don't want.
Right, so I, um, really, really understand what concerns you, okay? And you're right, pieces, um, you know, uh, we need to be adding programs to support our students and their needs. Okay, I can promise you, we're looking at the whole picture, like, um, and, and as opposed to one school and another. Um, and, and that because we're looking at the whole picture, uh, we're making difficult choices here. And, uh, but there's no, no way to, um, to explain away the complexities. Um, and that's a complexity that, at, at Beeman or, um, or West Parish or East Veterans. Um, they all have basic complexities and all have their challenges. You are, you are absolutely right that there's vast differences, we know, and physical plant. Um, but they're also, to them that challenges related to, um, supporting their students. So I, I can hear you, um, very noted. Um, and I can, I can assure you, we're the biggest possible picture, making the difference.
It's also important to know, um, I'm sure those concerns and those strategies, working out the bigger picture. Um, it's also important to know that, uh, a program might be already exists.
I know.
That they're there and we're adding, say, a lower level for the core younger kids. Um, so it, it's not two new classrooms, it's, it's one new classroom, albeit, look at what you just said, it displaced and that's.
It's displaced.
It is, and, and that's a challenge. I can tell you that real quickly, at West Parish and East Vets, the space is premium, premium schools. And, and so it's, it's a great concern, given those limitations too. So, um, and, and there is no space.
No, of course not, no, I mean, I wouldn't.
Right.
Of course not, yeah.
So it's, it's, it is a huge challenge for the district. It's important to, uh, recognize the limitations and the decisions that we made and plan. But, but according.
So just out of curiosity, if someone is here, knowing that we're letting these vets open, so what, East Vets is running out of space already?
Well, I, so.
No, I mean, I mean, there are spaces that can be utilized for different, uh, and, and purposes,
Right.
which looks happening at, uh, West Parish and it's also happening at Beeman, you know? Yeah, so that, that, that's pretty there. Um, there are also challenges with the, with the nature of the building in terms of just, um, you know, inside and outside has, has also challenges as well, you know? Uh, larger spaces, larger hallways and sort of stuff, plus in, in most situations, but, but may not be, you know, with certain, a lot of students, um, yeah, so that's, that, that's the situation there.
We have to keep in mind, we didn't build our schools for more kids, we built on current enrollment.
Right.
So it's not like.
No, but they're.
To run out of space, well, we built for the amount of students that we had in place.
We built East Vets last, I mean, yeah, East Vets is so.
Right, so they are bigger spaces, but it was built for the amount of students that was in there.
And they still have that same amount of students.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, I just, I. So um, you know, I just, I.
I didn't mean to say running out of space, I just wanted to be clear, we didn't build our schools bigger to grow.
No, of course not. No, of course not. We built it for the students we have, and we have that amount of students right now. So, yeah, I just, I just wanna make this like in public and on the record, that this is a deep concern. Um, and, you know, and a safety concern as well with woods and, you know, in that space and no cameras, so.
I think the one thing I heard, um, which I know we talked about in the past when different programs kind of have been shifted, but it's not the first time that certain things have shifted, is the idea that, you know, the older, the upper grades have the program and the younger grades were somewhere else. And just for families having, not having to have that transition.
Yeah.
You know, third grade to a different school, um, it's probably a benefit to to that for me as well.
Hundred percent, it just comes at a big cost. That's what I'm trying to say, that that's a hundred percent true. Just a big cost to us.
It's the repurposing that, I think, that's what's real, because East Vets right here, the extension, cars that go really fast there, right? So it's a lot of traffic there. And um, and West Parish is also, so so it's the repurposing, I think, is really what's difficult with those choices.
Is the repurposing and is the sort of essential inequity that already exists in the buildings? Those buildings are not the same, you know, East Vets and West Parish are very different buildings to walk into them from Beeman. And um, and students experience that, so, so am I.
Like, uh, somebody explain to me what the concern is with the woods?
Well, these were, it's a behavioral program.
So students are leaving, leaving, leaving the building and then maybe um not being, it'd be more difficult to find them because of.
Sure, so there's no.
But here, here, you know, peace, then give.
Huh?
Sorry, sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
No, I was just wondering that, yeah, I mean, yeah, I hear what you're saying now, and so kids are are off campus.
No, that, that, that with the behavioral issue, you know, could, there's no cameras, there's no camera, like, there's no way to see. If somebody goes into the woods, like, they're in the woods, you know?
So I believe there's cameras on the outside, they might use many cameras.
Right, but not as in your, right, though, then? Um, maybe, but anyway, but so just woods, and you don't, maybe West Parish too, woods are hard when you've got kids who are.
How many additional students are coming to Beeman because of this?
Two, to, to start the year, to start, yeah, so a few to to start.
A few meaning five?
Meaning, so uh, so four.
Four?
Four, I think it's anticipated, four to five, yeah, new students. But there is, there's, I think there was.
It's just the utilization space.
Single digit.
Taking up the state.
Yeah, it's to repurpose, yeah.
Yeah.
A lot of our space in woods, you know, I'm.
Yeah, they are.
I, I have, I have deep knowledge of the woods around East Gloucester. And I rent them in heels and on ice. Um, it it is something that is part of, you know, education, right? And and but but that is, that wasn't even a behavioral program. And I have students that I would make sure that they're safe, and that's what we do every day. And um, we're, these are tough decisions, and we're making the best decisions we can, looking at the whole picture. And, yeah, there's some downfalls about the libraries, it, and it's unfortunate. Um, something that maybe we could try to enhance in another way, but.
Yeah, like we did at West Parish, not West Parish, Plum Cove, which is a little library.
Went to the state.
Went to the state, yeah.
And that's what's happening at Beeman, it's going to.
The students will still have access to all great books and still have access to Beeman, still have all of that.
And they sell contained classrooms?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm trying to start.
Yeah.
But um, let's continue.
Wondering, you know, just to address the concern with cameras, I mean, because it is putting more pressure on the schools and put more pressure on any school that it goes to. Um, but I would just ask that administration assess the need for additional cameras, if that's in shape, right?
I wanna be clear, cameras aren't used to, to supervise and surveil kids. They're used in hindsight to understand what's, what's going on.
Okay.
So I'm not saying that, you know, so so adding cameras doesn't help.
Different purpose.
When the kids are little, it only helps to learn what happened after. Okay, so, um, yeah, so I don't wanna say that cameras are an answer to, to a student.
No, I'm just trying to think of a way to support, this is just a decision that's being made from a building perspective, like what can we do, if anything, to prepare in a better way to stabilize the environment?
Check that it's.
It's in place.
It's in place.
Exactly.
Yeah, I mean, an- another area to support, this isn't specifically the emotional behavioral program, but but, you know, there's a journey I've already talked about, you know, what does she need in terms of library?
Right.
Well, on stage in terms of, you know, challenging and cars and that sort of stuff. So that, those are other additional ways to support, which makes this, this creation, you know, easier to work out. That's what I think, so. Um, just, again, just to remind folks is that, you know, in our increases here, uh, includes um taking funding that was on, has been been on uh grants and putting in our operating budget. And those are very significant costs, I mean, curriculum materials and throw books, essential curriculum, instructional materials, sorry, to adjust bus transportation lease. Um, and uh, and so that, that now can be on our operating budget going forward, those areas. Uh, and just we'll wrap up with the numbers here in terms of the summary. So as everyone know, as we, as I've said numerous times, the three primary areas that um are, uh, need to increase costs in public school districts are our special education costs, are actually obligated wages, um, the benefits, and including health insurance. Uh, so just in terms of, you're looking at the, this is added district transportation tuition. So FY twenty-six is uh the right-hand column here, seven point two five million dollars for the cost of added district placements, um, one point five million for the cost of added transportation of our total cost of eight point eight mil- eight point eight million dollars. You can see we're doing better than last year on that. Um, and then you're looking at now in terms of the general fund. Uh, the green is from the prior slide, seven point two five million dollars in added tuition costs. That's our costs, but then we have offsets, which means that you get down to the blue, blue row here. And we're at the operating budget, speaking three point seven million dollars of those costs, okay? This hasn't changed, just to summarize it for folks. Similarly on transportation, the one point five million dollars we showed you on the earlier slide are the costs for added transportation, for education placements outside of the district. Um, we have an offset from the circuit break revolving fund, that means over one point five million dollars of costs, seven forty thousand dollars are being paid for through the general. Six. Keep going unless someone has a question. Uh, health insurance, uh, another significant increase. You can see that um really the highest increase we've had in, you know, since before FY twenty-one, an eight point one three percent uh increase in uh healthcare costs uh to seven point two six million dollars, um, which is thirteen point four percent of our budget. So the percent of our budget hasn't gone up too much, but it is the highest percentage of our operating budget that we've ever seen, thirteen point four percent. Um, and that's an increase of eight percent over the last year. Uh, the costs. Again, we have some offsets through grants and other, and other offsets. So from the seven point two million dollars we just showed you in the green row, what's actually being paid for by the general fund is six point nine million dollars for health, health insurance. That includes retirees as well, right, Karen?
Uh, that's not with retirement.
Not with retirement, that's just for our current employees.
Correct.
Yeah. Uh, this is a summary of um uh the changes, which we've sort of gone through here. To us, education, tuition, education, two hundred fifty thousand, two hundred fifty thousand dollars less on the operating budget, general fund, even though our costs have increased, have increased uh for, for transfer, tuition, education. Um, all our salary increase adjustments is one point, just over one point five million dollars. Our only benefit increases, health and retire raises, here is sixty, seventy thousand dollars about on the operating budget. For transportation lease payments uh coming off the grant on the operating budget to the two hundred, three hundred seventy thousand dollars. Um, and then the next slide here are the um critical materials, instructional materials and supplies, again, that are coming off of grants and going on our operating budget, four hundred, over four hundred thousand dollars. And their new positions is two hundred and forty thousand dollars. That's a total of two point seven four million dollars that matches the increase in the, in the mayor's recommended budget to the city council. Trying to say consistently, like we typically do. And then this is a summary of the budget year by year, uh, fifty four point two million dollars for the total budget. Increase of two point seven four million dollars, as an increase of five point three percent. Um, the second highest growth we've had um for quite some time dating back to FY twenty-eighteen and probably before. So significant increase, uh, which allows us to strengthen crime number programs, add some staff, but also um put a significant amount of dollars, wood and grants, um, to the operating budgets. And then this is um the department by department budgets. Um, and so I think, I think it was, uh, one of the, maybe our last meeting is that it's a capture on professional development um is, is, is increasing by seventy percent, that's, that is dollars that are coming off of grants and going on the operating budget. I believe um, that's a curriculum materials, that is a curriculum materials.
Then uh also software, educational software.
Software licenses as well. The other increase you see is on IT, that includes those Chromebooks coming off of grants going around a little bit too. Otherwise, it'd be mostly in line with um, with a five point three two percent increase. Yeah, um, are the Chromebooks on on lease or we own them? What's the cost? We've always purchased them. Uh huh. Uh, for half of the ones we're getting next year, um, we're going to start leasing. Yeah, so, which is, it helps in terms of cost slightly, um, yeah, so.
Because it's paid over three years.
And we'll probably have a combination of lease and purchase in the coming years. Yeah, but it's sort of best economic. Last couple of things here. Um, okay, so just chapter seventy update, so this is still changing. Chapter seventy, seventy funding, which is the local aid for education uh from the state. It can finalize, the state budget's finalized. So there's been a couple of adjustments here, sort of up and down for the city. Um, the House and Senate in, in, increased chapter seventy aid. Um, for the school choice dollars, they also increased our burden. So there's, at this point, between the House and Senate and the government, a difference um of hundred and sixty thousand dollars more coming to the city um from the House and Senate, but it's not finalized, yes, we don't know where they're going. But we'll keep an eye on this, um, there is some possibility that if there, if the, if the aid for education is a net positive, the mayor talked about that those dollars coming to the schools. But we'll talk, we'll, we'll, we'll wait and see on that. Um, and then just a summary of where we are and next steps. Um, uh, assuming the committee votes to approve the budget and send it to the mayor and for him to submit to the city council for their review on June third. We'd be in front of the uh city's B and F subcommittee, probably a committee of the whole um uh for the whole uh city council to present the school's budget. Um, and then um we would have uh assuming they go forward with it. Um, and be, our B and F can reconsider it on June eighteenth overtime, and then school may final vote. Uh, that hasn't changed, the process hasn't changed, um, the only thing that changed was that we, you know, on the June thirteenth. You have the, you have the number in front, right?
Yes, five two, five four two two five. So um, as we discussed at B and F, there was a motion put forward to recommend to the full committee to approve the fiscal two thousand twenty-six budget and uh fifty four million two hundred twenty-eight thousand eight hundred ninety-seven thousand. And also.
Second.
Okay, uh, your numbers here are rounded?
Yeah.
On this schedule. What would you, when you, what, what is the, um, the industry?
The number that was spoken of.
That was the motion, that was the number in the whole.
Yeah, that's the.
Fifty-four million, two hundred twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred ninety-seven thousand.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Very. So it's been moved and seconded, um, we have to move on.
Chairman person, Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Mallon?
Yes.
Mr. Lee Sin?
Yes.
Mr. McKee?
Yes.
Mr. Mania?
Yes.
This Prince?
Yes.
They have.
Yes.
Okay. Um, the motion is to approve the fiscal two thousand twenty-six budget for submission to the mayor and to the city council in the amount of fifty-four million, two hundred twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred ninety-seven dollars. And I suppose.
Second.
Okay, second, I'll call it again, please.
Chairman person, Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Mallon?
Yes.
This Lee Sin? Yes, Mr. McKee?
Yes.
Mr. Mania?
Yes.
This Prince?
Yes.
Yes.
I just wanna say thank you to all on administration for the hard work and thoughtful process that went forward in this budget to address the needs we need to address in this budget at this time. I know we're not all happy with the way that it's coming forward, but I have. I um, I'm just really impressed with Dr. Jarvis's recommendations and being able to zone in on the areas of changes that we expect this year. Knowing they're coming at a cost, but a well-deserved cost, I'm just very impressed. Yeah, thank you very much.
I do, I really appreciate our team, you know, led by Gary, Cody supports great. Um, and then also, you know, our, our team of, of school leaders really thinking things through. Um, you know, to be able to, uh, thank you to the mayor, um, especially to be able to, after last year's budget, to be, to have one where we are not only, um, you know, able to add positions, but add them in very, very important places, okay? In a place that many, many folks have pressed upon, so they need to invest in, um, special education. Um, you'll do that for, for a year and also have, you know, have us in better shape in terms of, um, I mean, ongoing operating budget, but also, um, uh, sure breaker revolving fund. Um, it was just a testament to a lot of folks, you know, hard work, folks who know our teachers as that and don't know, you know, that they're impacting the budget, but they are, you know, um, in, in positive ways. So just appreciate our team and, and being able to present to the committee, but also to the city a budget that is much stronger and is in better shape than just a year ago.
I do wanna express my concern a little bit too, um, yeah, I know you probably wanna speak, so I wanna say this before you speak. Um, so we're, we're committing to this co-teaching model um in a bigger way than we have in the past. I know we've done it in the past, but we're really putting um resources in place. And I do have a concern um that there's not gonna be enough momentum going forward to keep this. So I would just hope that we reach out to our ladies' arms on the city council and talk to them about how important the investment into this budget is, not just for um funding, but also for the commitment going forward for our students, um, that will be a result of the hard work and um zoning in on the needs of our students. It's really a commitment over a couple of years as we see in our budget, but um, the city council, I think it would be great if they heard from us individually of um how important this is over the next couple of years, not just for this year alone.
That's a good segue to, just wanted to remind people at home that on the city's website, gloucester-me.gov, right in the top line, you see a, a red dot, it says proposed FY twenty-six budgets. They can click and read the full budget, which is about a hundred and forty-seven million dollars and some change. Um, Connor McCorkle, our CFO, I've gotta give a lot of credit to, he's done a great job. In the past, the budget basically looked like an Excel sheet, lines of boring, boringness. This is a, has a much more of a narrative, easier for the layman to understand. Um, and I agree, you know, reach out to the council, uh, this, the five point three two percent increase on the school budget is about five point three two percent more than the city side budget. So I think it's important that they understand um that we put our best foot forward. And I think, I, I, I'm sure the administration would say that the, the changes being proposed are not budgetary, but more educationally based. It just happens to be beneficial to the budget as a, as a, I guess, a result, but um it's been a tough budget year, put this together. When we're talking about this last fall, we were looking at a pretty empty deficit. But through Connor's uh great work and uh things changing, we're in really good shape. But I have to include the caveat, we're one executive order away from chaos. We don't know what's gonna come out of Washington. But as of today, this is a very good budget that we can work with in this growth on both the city side and the school side. Um, but we've gotta keep the momentum going.
Back to the first budget discussion, um.
I conclude with some budget discussion. Um, next, I know business is the subcommittee report. And we have one for building a finite subcommittee of May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five. I'm your person. So I'll be very agreed, I'll be, we spent a lot of time on the budget. Um, we talked about, um, the regional consortium contract for transportation. Um, going forward next year, we are gonna have um, shared riders with neighborhood districts. Um, to bring our students back and forth from like the um, different local communities to like, say, the consortium, and we're gonna split costs. I think Dr. Jarvis did a lot of work on this and realized that we can have a savings of up to twenty percent in our transportation. So it's a new process for us. I, I believe NICS is the um, the business that won the bid, um, did go out to bid. Um, so we're looking to see hopefully that twenty percent savings next year. Um, with that being said, I just wanna bring up too about the two thousand and twenty-five budget that we're in now. Um, this, our school committee did a really good job through the administration of budgeting, um, for the cost of transportation and um, added district education, because we maintained our budget that we put forward. We actually spent a little bit of, a little bit less money than we did the year before. But um, so going forward, hopefully we stay on that same trajectory where there's not too much increase. Um, and we see the savings of this shared ridership. So excited to see how that plays out. Um, the group that won the bid know that um, they don't have the ability to discipline students. Um, they can provide the transportation, um, and students can't be on the bus for more than an hour in their travel time. So, um, it's a new adventure for transportation and fingers crossed that it works out well. I'm not gonna talk about the budgets. Um, I do wanna bring up the fact that we talked about extraordinary relief. Um, Gary always gets excited about to talk about the hard work that goes into it, the money that comes back to us. And we are getting three hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and eight nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars, um, which we have received this year. Um, overall, our, um. No, the um, I have a brain ramp right now. The money we have at the end of the year, not the prepay, the sugar breaker. Sugar breaker.
Yeah.
Yeah, um. I'm sorry, I was looking for that figure and I don't have it, so I'll have to come back to that. But um, so we also approved some budget transfers. Um, we did the budget, um, that we presented to tonight in the motions to go forward to the mayor's office. Um, we talked about the chapter seventy update, um, that Ben gave a little message on earlier. So I don't wanna repeat what was said. Um, we did talk about one-time expenditures at the end of this year, buying Chromebooks, computers and cameras um, for the school district, and also there was a request to Gary Frisch to potentially get a um, cost for maybe updating the furniture in the library that we're sitting in. Um, the blue tables, the chairs that don't seem too secure. So hoping that um, at the end of the year, when it was said and done with the transfers, that there may be some money to do some upgrades here in the library. Um, and I believe that was it. Thanks, Sugar Breaker.
Um, next, our order of business is action, and we have one grant to accept. I knew that we'd accept, accept the fiscal year twenty-five Town Green Youth Climate Leadership Grant, the nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
I can say.
Second, questions, discussion. Oh, favorite, say, I?
I.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you. Anybody that is still in there with us. Good night.